Good evening, welcome to the Free Town Board of Selectmen's meeting. It being October 15th, 2018 at 6:04 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Is anyone recording the meeting?
Free cam.
Anyone else? Okay. On today's consent agenda, 6:00 PM, Board of Selectmen. Discuss vote on funding sources for articles of special town meeting warrant. Discuss vote on Board of recommendation for special town meeting Article 5. Discuss vote on next special town meeting date as recommended by the Police Subcommittee. Discuss approved cellphone use policy as submitted by Town Administrator David Demont. Sign and renew proposal for MIA health benefits as recommended by Health Insurance Advisory Committee. Approve ambulance abatements. Write-off for September 2018 as submitted by Gary Silvia, Police and Fire Chief. Approve Board of Selectmen's minutes for September 24th and October 1st, 2018. The Town Administrator's report, we have nothing on the Board of Health. The Personnel Board has appointed Jeffrey Chandler as Public Records Clerk, Building Department, effective October 15th, 2018. Sign change of status report for Joshua Simmons, Signal Operator, effective October 15th, 2018. Sign change of status report for Kalen A. Jones, Police Patrolman, effective October 16th, 2018. Sign change of status report for Chelsea Hester, Library Technician, effective November 11th, 2018. New business, dates of our upcoming Board of Selectmen's meeting, Monday, November 5th, Monday, November 19th, Monday, December 3rd, Monday, December 17th. And we have nothing for executive session tonight. With that being said, let's go right through, discuss vote on funding sources for articles for special town meeting warrant. It's in my pocket.
I have the motion that we all would fund the articles as is.
Article 7. We'll go right through one by one, okay? Make that easier. Money articles, we have Article 7. Article 1 is...
Those are the transfers.
That's what we're talking about.
Right, it's that. You know, funded as a state.
Okay. So I'll take a motion for Article 1.
Yeah, Article 1 has written warrant.
Funded as stated in the warrant. I'll second that. Motion made and seconded through, funded as stated in the warrant. All in favor?
Aye.
Article 2...
Article 2...
Is also awarded Department. No, this Article 2 is Board of Selectmen for 1727.
Come out a tax levy? Make that motion?
Make motion, take it from excess tax levy. I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 3.
Article 3, with the out of free cash?
Article 3 from free cash for $11,638.13. Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second the motion. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 4.
For Article 4, out of the tax levy also.
Out of tax levy, $60,000. Is that a motion?
How many, that motion?
Second motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 5, $25,000 for the brush pile.
Derek, any information on that other than $25,000?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna propose that. I feel comfortable that we could probably drop that $10,000 to $15,000. I got a quote a little bit lower than the 25 that I proposed, and I feel like I can work with it a little bit. I do have another account that I can try to, if it does go over the 15 just a little bit, I can play with. So I'm gonna feel comfortable being able to drop that to $15,000.
You can do that on the floor, correct?
Okay.
So from the tax levy also?
Yes.
Excess levy. Is that a motion?
A motion.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 6. Article 6 is for $12,000 for the town bonds.
Out of tax levy, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded to take, to use $12,000 till it's out of tax levy. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 7. Article 7, new number, is $24,000. Put the paper there.
Yes. I'll make a motion for $24,000 out of tax levy.
Do we have to do this?
Yeah, you can do that, but you have to specify. The problem with this is, this one is raise appropriate transfers. You have to specify funding source, you can say, then Article 7, $24,000 with the funding to come from.
So we'll make the motion here now from where it's coming from?
Right.
And then this will just be the number that we serve?
Right, well, you'd have to tell the moderator, yeah, the funding source, yeah.
But we're discussing the funding source now, and then now... We're discussing funding sources.
Got it.
So Article 7 is the contract for the... Club, the Police Dispatches Union. Do I have a motion where the money's gonna come from?
$24,000 from the tax levy.
I'll second the motion. That was a motion for it?
Yes.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Tim Key, please.
Yep, 6:10.
Thank you. Article 8. Article 8 is from Lyuna for the Free Town Highway Unit B. Funding source.
A tax levy. Make the motion.
Second.
In dollar amount?
Dollar amount will be...
It's $5,544.98.
So that motion was $6,544.98?
Yes.
And seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 9. To see if the town will vote to re-appropriate. This is for collective bargaining grant for Unit A, Town Hall Unit A. It's, the amount is $22,515.99.
Out of tax levy, make the motion.
Second.
Motion made, take it out of tax levy and second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 10. Article 10 is for the CBA, for the Full-Time Firefighters Association. The amount for Article 10 is $23,330. Do I have a motion to take the funding source?
A tax levy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for the tax levy. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 11 is a non-monetary article. Article 12. The amount of $1,500 for the purpose of shredding 121 boxes of records.
Out of tax levy.
Second.
Motion made, take it out of tax levy and second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 13 is not a money... Yes, it is. Article 13. Article 13 is for OSHA safety requirements that'll be effective till February 1st, 2019, approximately $30,000. Well, $30,000 shouldn't be approximately here. Funding source?
Tax levy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for tax levy. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
14. $2,380 for a town share of FEMA assistance for firefighters grant. Diesel exhaust removal system.
Out of tax levy.
Second.
Motion made, take it out of tax levy. Discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article 15. Article 15 is for $8,750 for Fire Station 1 located at 3 Elm Street for the facade of the building. Upgrade the facade of the building. Do I have a motion for funding source?
Out of free cash.
That's a motion for free cash? And second? I'll second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
I thought we were gonna take it out of capital stabilization. So if it's out of, okay, at the end, the last article is for so much money from free cash to go into capital stabilization, does that take that into consideration, or no?
We have $225,000 and $255,000 for stabilization and capital stabilization.
Is that with the $8750 in capital stabilization?
No.
So this is, that was spent in $8750 out of free cash?
Okay.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion, future, further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 16. For $17,463 for FEMA staffing for adequate fire emergency response safer grant.
Tax levy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to take the money from tax levy. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 17. Article 17 is a non-money issue. It's simply changing the contract. Article 18. Article 18 is $1,082 in the water and sewer enterprise fund. Right. Is funding from as listed on the paper?
Yeah.
Do I have that in motion?
I'll make that motion from retained earnings.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 19. Article 19 is also from the Water Department. Also is a, from their funds. Do I have a motion on Article 19 for funding source?
The $36,500 from retained earnings.
Second.
From the Water Department. $36,500 from the Water Department for retained earnings. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Article 20. Article 20 is for $1,587.24 for the printing of the flyer. It's a petition article. That's a petition, so.
The article's on the floor. Somebody makes a motion to pass it.
That was already paid. Article 21 is a zoning article, non-monetary article. Article 22 is a zoning article, non-monetary article. Article 23, this is for us, is also a zoning article, yes, sorry. It was Article 24.
Yeah.
And Article 24 is the stabilization in free cash article.
Okay. The $225 for stabilization in free cash and the $255 for capital stabilization in free cash.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move $225,000 from free cash to stabilization fund and $255,000 from free cash to capital stabilization, capital stabilization fund. I did say stabilization fund, first, anyway?
Yes.
So it's $225 from stabilization, $255 from capital stabilization.
Wait, just to correct you. This is to transfer from free cash to...
To the capital stabilization.
And to the stabilization.
Correct. Not from, to.
Right, so...
It's a majority vote.
Yes, because we get a majority vote, because it's two. The first one listed is the capital stabilization accounts, how much to the capital?
To the capital stabilization. Capital stabilization will be $255,000.
And regular stabilization is $225,000.
$225,000 to regular, $225,000 to regular stabilization.
Thank you.
We had a motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Sign all the funding sources for tonight's meeting. Next on the agenda, discuss vote on Board recommendation for special town meeting Article 5. Article 5, I don't think you were here for that. Derek met with a couple of bidders and his peers that he can do it for, would you say, about $10,000 less than what the article is?
Correct. I'm gonna make a motion that we go from $25,000 to $15,000. I got a quote that was a little under the $25,000. I can try to work with it to get a little bit lower, and then I have another account that I can, I can play with a little bit to cover a little bit over $15,000. But I think I'm comfortable enough to make a motion to drop it from $25,000 to $15,000 on the floor.
Derek, you would make a motion to drop it from $25,000, simply make a motion to raise an appropriate $15,000?
Okay.
One of us wanted that, but they're counting.
Okay, I'm sorry, not a resident. One of you would need to make that, right?
So maybe you would make the motion to read $15,000 instead of the $25,000.
That motion would simply be to raise an appropriate $15,000? Sorry.
Well, is the moderator gonna read it as is, and then we'd make the motion to change to $50,000?
You know, he would read the article, and you would just, the motion would be to raise an appropriate $15,000. That's the, that would be the main motion.
He's still confused.
A little bit, but it's a printed article.
He has $25 in front of him.
Exactly, but that's the article.
Right.
And the motion is the action. So the article would say $25,000.
Okay.
So we're gonna make the motion, we're gonna change the motion.
Okay.
Which is changed to $15,000.
$15,000.
Because that's your, that's your main motion. That is the action.
Can I have a motion to amend Article 5 to read $15,000 being funded from free cash?
If I get, it's not a motion to amend.
Not amended, right.
It's just a motion. Raise $5,000 to $15,000.
For Article 5.
So Mark, it'd be a motion to fund Article 5 in the amount of $15,000.
From the tax. Right, exactly. That's perfect. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? I hope not. All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss vote on next special town meeting date as recommended by Police Subcommittee. Does the Police Subcommittee have a recommendation for the next meeting?
So the Police Subcommittee met, and the Subcommittee met to have a special town meeting on November 14th at 7:00 PM.
At 7:00.
At the High School.
So can I have a motion to set the next special town meeting as recommended by the Free Town Police Subcommittee Board on November 14th, 2018? At the Conica High School ad?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Will you want counsel at that meeting?
Discuss approved cellphone use policy as submitted by Town Administrator David Demont.
Okay, the policy basically came out of a bargain that we're involved in with a situation where basically everyone has had a cellphone, they use cellphone. We don't encourage them to use them all during the day, but there's one department where they weren't allowed to use them at all. And it was, this came out of that discussion, and basically outlines the basic rules as to when it's appropriate to use a cellphone, as well as recognizing that we want to keep it to a minimum, and been at the end gives us the ability to further regulate it or eliminate it at the direction of the department head and myself.
You all have a copy of, copy of the policy? Any discussion on the copy? I'll obtain a motion.
I'll make a motion to second the cellphone policy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Sign and renew proposal for MIA health benefits as recommended by the Health Insurance Advisory Committee.
Okay, we met on October 11th with MIA. It was a rate, they didn't actually have a position for MIA there. And they forwarded, the Insurance Advisory Committee forwarded a letter stating that after looking at documentation presented by MIA relative to health insurance coverage for the upcoming school year 19, the Commission, Committee made a motion to have all existing coverage increased by .59, so it was a tiny, tiny amount, it was like a dollar and a half or three, for managed flu, the seniors too, and zero percent for medics too, and the motion was carried unanimously. So there's a tiny increase on the medics and the managed flu plans for the upcoming years.
I'll make a motion to accept that presented by the Insurance Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve ambulance abatements, write-offs for September 2018 as submitted by Fire Chief Gary Silvia.
Make the motion to approve the annual abatements for September 2018 in the amount of $72,963.39, and the write-offs for the month of September 2018 in the amount of $13,249.1 for a grant total of $85,338.37.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve Board of Selectmen's minutes for September 24th and October 1st. And what are the issues with the minutes as written?
No, just a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as written. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Personnel Board, appoint Jeffrey Chandler as Public Records Clerk, Building Department. Oh, I'm sorry, David, I skipped you.
That's all right. On Friday, with the help of KP Law, we closed on the Bullock Road property in the park. I'm pleased about that. Congratulations. And, you know, the attorney shared a great job helping us pull that together and finally close on it. I want the Board to know that I've passed the third class in the procurement program. And we speak certified as an official state department officer in the near future. I mean, I'm gonna need a spilling of saying I'm serving as a chief procurement officer in Free Town.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Our new building inspector, Jeff Chambers, on the board, we've had a number of meetings over the last couple days. I just basically walked in, I told him about some of the issues that I've been dealing with, particularly relating facilities, and I'm gonna bring him into the loop in terms of helping me put together the things that we need to do and the issues that have been outstanding for a long time. I'm gonna get him working on those immediately, and I've identified those to him. I don't wanna overwhelm him at this point, but I did let him know some of the issues that have been out there for a while, and what's if we really want to see resolved. The Harper's personnel modules moving forward, we got agreement, and payroll date change. And we actually have, we've got the card, product card, like it's like a, we put a time clock to swipe on it, and we've been testing it, so things are moving forward there. And I just also wanted to call to the attention that in the packet is a letter from our Department of Veterans Services relative to the legislation of the Brave Act, MTL Chapter 218, that will start to take effect on Veterans Day of this year in recognition of all the veterans that have so bravely served our country. It gives a whole list of new benefits that are gonna be given to the veterans, deservedly so. And I just wanted to let you know, receive that letter and an outline on the additional benefits that will be provided to our veterans. Is it for me?
Very good, thank you. Okay, now, the Personnel Chair, Charlie Sullivan.
First item is the certificate of appointment for Jeffrey Chandler to be Public Records Clerk for the building.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Hearing discussion. Hearing done. Second, it's for the change of status for Joshua Simmons. Single operator to operate 40 hours.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Motion made. Next, it changes status, Avery Jones, Officer, step 1, Officer, step 2.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. I'll, any discussion on that? Hearing done, all in favor? Next is a change of status for Chelsea Hester, Library Technician. Oh, yeah, and increase of hours, yes. 30 hours to 35 hours.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, is there enough money in their budget for this?
Yes.
Have you talked to them about this? Next, the thing, the opening, one of the libraries on Friday, we've saved, you know, the...
Do you have a motion to make?
Yeah, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Personnel Chair. New business again, date of upcoming Board of Selectmen's meeting, meetings is Monday, November 5th, Monday, November 19th, Monday, December 3rd, Monday, December 17th. And that'll do it for this meeting. I'll obtain a motion.
I think you missed one vote here.
I did, I confused myself from...
I know that, I got that, I figured that. The brush, the transfer stays in brush, you didn't vote if you were gonna recommend the article or not. You voted to...
Me personally.
Because we held it for the last time, right?
Right. So you didn't vote on the right act.
I'll make a motion to recommend the article.
I'll second.
With the new figure.
Motion made and seconded to recommend the article. Any discussion on the motion to recommend? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Keeping us on our toes.
Those are good checks. I'll obtain a motion to continue this, to recess. Motion to recess until after the town meeting. Moved made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to recess? All in favor?
Ladies and gentlemen, the appointed hour having arrived and quorum being present, I'll now call the town meeting to order. I'll ask the town clerk to come up and read the warning and return.
Warrant for the special town meeting Monday, October 15th, 2018, 7:00 PM. Bristol County, neither of the constables in the Town of Free Town greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Free Town who are qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the Free Town Elementary School Auditorium, Lot 3, Bullock Road, East Free Town, Massachusetts, on Monday, October 15th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by post and attested coffees thereof at the following places: a Sony Post Office, East Free Town Post Office, the stores of Quick Pick in East Free Town, Junior's Convenience Store and Free Town Town Hall, and the Free Town Communications Center. Thereof fail not to make return of the original warrant with your due ones thereof immediately after making service thereof to the Town Clerk of Free Town, Free Town, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the Town of Free Town this 24th day of September, anno domini 2018, signed by the Free Town Board of Selectmen. To the Town Clerk, Town of Free Town, Massachusetts, September 26th, 2018... to the Town Clerk, Town of Freetown, Massachusetts, September 26th, 2018. I have this day posted attested coffees of this warrant in the designated places described herein, signed Carlton E. Abbott, Junior Constable.
Everybody who's checked in, just make sure that you have the green vote paper in case we need to do a hand count. And for anybody that might be new or just needs to refresher, if you have questions or wanna discuss any of the articles, come up to the microphone, give us your name and at least the street that you're on. If there's a couple of people already standing, it's all right to form a line. It's not rude, it helps us know that there's somebody else waiting to talk. And with that, oh, yep, all of the articles at tonight's meeting, unless otherwise noted, will be funded out of taxation. And now we'll start with Article 1. To see if the town will vote to supplement the amount raised from water sewer enterprise revenues for fiscal year 19, previously approved by the vote taken under Article 13 of the annual town meeting of June 4th, 2018, continued to June 5th, 2018, by transferring from fiscal year 19 water sewer enterprise revenues to a sum of $4,648, to be allocated to the general fund for the purpose of funding increases in indirect costs previously appropriated in the omnibus budget by the vote taken under Article 1 of the annual town meeting of June 4th, 2018, continued to June 5th, 2018, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion, is seconded as read.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article 1 as read. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 1 is adopted unanimously. Article 2. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,727 to supplement the personnel costs contained in the Board of Selectment budget as appropriated in the omnibus budget by the vote taken under Article 1 of the annual town meeting of June 4th, 2018, continued to June 5th, 2018, for the fiscal year 2019, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve this read.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 2 as read. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 2 is adopted unanimously. Article 3 will be funded by free cash, not by taxation. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $11,638.13 to pay a bill from fiscal year 2018 from Republic Services LLC due to unexpected increases in costs in recycling collection and disposal, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Health Agent. It requires a nine tenths vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve this read.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 3 as read. Is there any discussion on Article 3? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 3 is adopted unanimously. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $60,000 to supplement the fiscal year 2019 operating budget for curbside trash and recycling, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Health Agent. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve this read.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 4 as read. Is there any discussion? Sir? Oh, sir, you gotta come up to the microphone. And just give us your name and street, please.
My name's Ignacio Rahalas, I'm in 19, I recognize. I just wanna know, is this for the new contract that you have in Republic?
Derek Macedo, Health Agent.
All of the microphones have to be on for one of them to remember, I still don't understand.
Hello? This is not a new contract, this is, just to add on to the current contract that we currently have. We had a pretty major change that occurred over this past year with the recycling contract. And this is basically to just kinda cover us from the current contract that we're under. One of the articles was for a part of an unpaid bill from the vastest year. The second article is moving forward for this this year. But it's still the same contract.
Are we gonna recycle? Cause for the past year, I haven't seen any recycling, I've seen jobs doing the same.
We've been recycling for the last couple of years. Every year.
I trucked by my house, it filled it all in the same.
Hold on folks, if you have follow-up questions or whatever, he's gonna come up as well.
Joe Irwin, Baker Street. I'm just curious to know a little bit more about what happened with the previous contract. Hello, I don't think it's working again. Really, okay. I was just curious to know a little bit about what happened with the previous contract and contractor and is there, are they acting default or something? Or is there any recourse we have for them not performing? Or, I mean, why are we picking up the tab? You know, they have a contract and they agreed to perform the services, right?
I'll answer as to what happened. I'll let other people answer, so, you know, what's happening legally. Basically, Republic would pick up our, I forget what I should be placing. Republic was picking up the garbage and recycling. And they were taking the garbage to Crapo Hill, the recycling was going to a company called Week There Outbound. And one day in May, they just closed. Just no warning, doors were closed, the trucks actually got turned away. So from that point onward, we've been stranding recycling. As far as legally, I'm not gonna get into that part, but that's what happened.
Are there any more questions or discussion on Article 4? Okay, hearing none, the motion again was to adopt Article 4 as read. All in favor? All opposed? Article 4 is adopted unanimously. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $25,000 to grind the brush pile at the transfer station and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Health Agent. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Mr. Moderator, I'll make the motion to read the sum of $15,000 from taxation.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to reduce the amount in Article 5 to $15,000. So first we vote on that amendment. Is there any discussion or questions on that amendment to reduce the cost from $25,000 to $15,000? Yep, this is just on the amendment right now.
Brian Miller, Flag Swan Bros. Is this gonna be a yearly thing now? Cause I noticed that this brush pile wasn't an issue until this year, from what I read. Cause it was, I guess it was so much debris that's any reason. But, I mean, is this gonna be something now from here on out? We should expect the build for $15,000 to do this pile? Is there another way to handle the pile from here on out?
This is not going to be a yearly thing. I'm gonna make sure that this doesn't happen again. It was a big pile that I inherited. The Mark storms really made the situation much worse. So I just wanna get it cleaned up and then I will make sure it doesn't happen again. I'll come up with ways that, you know, separating it so it's a little bit easier to dispose of. I have a couple of ideas, but definitely this is not the plan to do this on a yearly basis.
What separation at this point is awesome.
At this point, it's too out of control.
Are there any additional questions or discussion on the reduction from $25,000 to $15,000? Okay, so we will vote first on that amendment. All in favor? All opposed? The amendment passes? We'll now vote on adopting Article 5 at that amount of $15,000. Is there any further question or discussion on that? Seeing none, go ahead.
This is Heath Metis, Jeffrey Lane. Just as a follow-up on what you had said before about a plan. Can you give us an example and does it require investment in, say, larger wood chippers or things like that?
Possibly. I mean, if I can work with, my initial thought is just get it separated. If you have the log separate from the brush, separate from the compost, A, it becomes easier to dispose of. And B, I can take care of the compost myself. Maybe we get a chipper to take care of the brush. Maybe we just get it sent out when it gets to a certain amount of a pile. But either way, it's cheaper once it's separated. This is right now just a pile. So, yeah, this is not fun, but I will make sure that we don't get to this point again. However my avenues turn out, that's what I'm gonna do. Hopefully it's not.
Okay, is there any further question or discussions on Article 5? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 5 is adopted unanimously at $15,000. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $12,000 to purchase and install a new auto lift for the town barn to replace the 1986 lift that is presently out of service, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Highway Surveyor. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve this read.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 6 as read. Is there any question or discussion on Article 6? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 6 is adopted unanimously. Article 7. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first year cost items contained in a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Freetown and Public Employees Union Local 1144 Leuna, Freetown Public Safety Dispatchers Union, covering the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021, and to supplement the fiscal year 2019 annual operating budget in the amounts and categories presented in the supplementary schedules as on file with the Town Clerk, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. What, this article as well?
This is, which article?
7. Okay. Alright, so the Finance Committee actually does not have a recommendation on this article. They have no recommendation.
Make a motion, is seconded as read.
These are the amounts.
$24,000.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 7 with the amount of $24,000. If you picked up one of these half-sheets with the warrant, this is one of the articles that has the number on it. The next few articles are, the numbers are on that sheet. Are there any questions or discussion on Article 7? Okay, hearing none? Alright, what the Finance Committee is telling me is that the next several articles that are for the contracts, they have no recommendation on any of those articles cause they did not have the dollar figures early enough to make a recommendation. Is there any further question or discussion on Article 7?
Brian Pickett, Jamie Court. I'll just ask a question, do we have an option or have these already been negotiated?
Well, the Personnel Board answered that, or the Town Administration.
And I'll go ahead and apply this to all the following questions that are similar.
All of these articles are to fund contracts that have been agreed upon. Answer your question?
I guess so.
Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article 7? Okay, hearing none, the motion was to adopt Article 7 with the amount of $24,000. All in favor? All opposed? Article 7 is adopted unanimously. Article 8. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first year cost items contained in a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Freetown and Public Employees Union Local 1144 Leuna, Freetown Highway Union, Unit B, covering the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021, and to supplement the fiscal year 2019 annual operating budget in the amounts and categories presented in the supplementary schedules as on file with the Town Clerk, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. And again, the Finance Committee makes no recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to accept it as read with the figure of $6,544.98 in taxes.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 8 as read in the amount of $6,544.98. Are there any questions or discussion for Article 8? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article 8 is adopted unanimously. Article 9. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first year cost items contained in a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Freetown and Public Employees Union Local 1144 Leuna, Freetown Town Hall, Unit A, covering the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021, and to supplement the fiscal year 2019 annual operating budget in the amounts and categories presented in the supplementary schedules as on file with the Town Clerk, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee makes no recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to accept it as read with the sum of $22,515.99 in taxation.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article 9 in the amount of $22,515.99. Is there any discussion or questions on Article 9? Sir?
Mike Blaze, Corner Park Road. I got a question, why doesn't the local take any expense of these, here, these bills? Why is the local referring to the town for all of these bills?
What you're doing is you're appropriating additional sum of money from this year's budget to pay for the contract negotiations. In other words, at the time of the annual town meeting, we had not negotiated a contract. So.
I'm pretty well, I do a lot of negotiating myself, I'm a local representative myself. The union usually splits the bill.
No, 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 this is not a bill. This is the contract.
This is negotiation of the contract.
No, 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 this is funding the contract. The salaries.
Oh, this is the salaries of the contract. The way it's written, it says it's the negotiation.
No, it doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't say that at all.
Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article 9? Hearing none, again, the motion was for $22,515.99. All in favor? All opposed? Article 9 is adopted unanimously. Article Nine is adopted unanimously. Article Ten? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of money for the purpose of funding and implementing the first year cost items contained in a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Freetown and Freetown Full-Time Firefighters Association, covering the period of July 1st, 2018... Excuse me, to June 30th, 2021, and to supplement the fiscal year 2019 annual operating budget in the amounts and categories presented in the supplementary schedules as on file with the town clerk and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectment. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee makes no recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to accept it as read with the sum of $23,330.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Ten with the figure of $23,330. Is there any discussion or questions on Article Ten? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Ten is adopted unanimously. Article Eleven? To see if the town will vote to accept as public ways the roadways known as Nick Drive, Cody Drive, Ethan Circle, and Riley Circle, as heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectment and shown on a plan entitled As-Built and Profile Plan of Nick Drive, Cody Drive, dated April 25th, 2018, and revised on June 19th, 2018, prepared by Hounden Land Surveying, Inc., a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectment to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain the fee or lesser interest in said roadway, and any drainage, utility, access, and other easements related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectment. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Eleven as read. Is there any question or discussion on Article Eleven? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Eleven is adopted unanimously. Article Twelve? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $1,500 for the purpose of shredding 121 boxes of records approved for destruction by the Supervisor of Public Records for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as the final phase of the project for a new archival storage location and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Town Accountant. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Make a motion to approve as read.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Twelve as read. Are there any questions or discussion on Article Twelve?
Joel Pussy, Millbar Road. How old are the records? Or what are they? Have they been computerized or anything? The Town Accountant's going to answer that question.
Thank you, Kim Dale's Town Accountant. The records have all been... Oh, sorry, the records have all been reviewed by a company called King Information Systems, and the records go back several years. We just had an issue where departments hadn't purged their records on a regular basis. Nothing is historical that's going to be destroyed. Those are all still kept.
Thank you. I was curious whether the records went back to the 1700s or something, and some of them should go to the Historic Society. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article Twelve? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Twelve is adopted unanimously. Article Thirteen? This is another one with the dollar figure on the smaller piece of paper. Article Thirteen? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of money to purchase equipment and supplies necessary to comply with the implementation of OSHA safety requirements, which will go into effect on February 1st, 2019, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Town Administrator. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to accept it as read with the sum of $30,000 in taxation.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Thirteen as read in the amount of $30,000. Is there any discussion or any questions on Article Thirteen?
Hi, Joe Rowan, Baker Street again. I'm just curious what is said by OSHA safety requirements? Are we talking like step core, compliance-based entries, excavation, and trenching, PPE, stuff like that, or what exactly are we buying?
Actually, all of the municipalities in the Commonwealth are now, as of February 1st, going to be subject to OSHA regulations in terms of safety and equipment, and what we'd have done is we've talked to our insurance company, MYA, about what we need to purchase and how to make our facilities safer as well as offer training programs. We've identified several items that are going to need to be fixed, and this is the money that we really need to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any additional questions or discussion on Article Thirteen? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Thirteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fourteen? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $2,380 and no cents representing the town share of a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters grant to install a diesel exhaust removal system for Fire Station 3 and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Fire Chief. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt Article Fourteen as read. Are there any questions or discussion on Article Fourteen? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fourteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fifteen? Will be funded by free cash and not by taxation. Article Fifteen? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $8,750 for the purpose of designing the facade of Fire Station 1, located at 3 Elm Street in Assonit, to accommodate modern-sized fire apparatus and any incidental and related costs thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Fire Chief. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee will address their recommendation directly.
We just want to make sure that everyone is aware that this $8,700 is just for the study, and that the end result should be a change in the doorway, which will be somewhere around $100,000 to accommodate new equipment.
I'll address the sum that the Finance Committee just said. We have spoken to an architect, and he has given us a figure that would be probably more like in the area of $50,000. So it'll be about $25,000 per door to raise the facade so that apparatus can fit in the station. No other apparatus other than the engine that is presently there would fit now into Station 1. Last summer, they were repaired. There was a need to repair Engine 1. There was no fire engine in Station 1 for approximately six to eight weeks. That's one issue. Engine 1 is now going to need to be replaced, and it'd be very difficult to purchase an engine that would fit into the station.
George, can you just... Do you recommend it or not recommend it?
No, we are recommending this article. I just want people to be aware of what the cost would be down the road.
So the Finance Committee does recommend the article. They just want to make folks aware of what the future cost will be. Is there any additional question or discussion on Article Fifteen?
Brian Pickett, Jane Mike Court again. Just a quick question. So if the cost ends up being well over $100,000, would we consider doing something different with the townspeople, have an opportunity to assess that other option at that time?
Yeah, so any time we spend money or bring an article forward, it's the townspeople that decide whether they're going to vote it up or down. Our job is to make sure that whatever number we bring forward is the correct number. So this $8,750 will get us to as close a number that we know is going to be exactly what we need. To come here and order, you know, ask for $125,000 when it could be 75, or vice versa, doesn't do anybody any good. So I think that once we know that right number, it'll come forward to at the annual town meeting and more than likely come out of capital stabilization, which is already money set aside for this reason.
Okay, are there any additional questions or discussion on Article Fifteen? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fifteen is adopted unanimously. Article Sixteen? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $17,463 and no cents representing the town share of a FEMA Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant for the purpose of supplementing the personnel budget of the Fire Department to hire two additional firefighter paramedics and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Fire Chief. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee will again address this article directly.
Again, we're recommending this article, but we want people to be aware that when this is adopted, the end result will be in a year or two, we will have two additional personnel at the fire stations, which will be an increase in the budget. The number I have here is $140,000 a year. Correct me on that. The grant is only for three years, and each year, the grant is reduced by an amount.
Make motion to accept as read.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Sixteen as read. Is there any question or discussion on Article Sixteen?
So I'm Mark Weldon at 2 Mill Street in Assonit, and I just want to make sure I heard it right. So if we approve this article, so this grant runs a certain amount of time, and then when the grant runs out, the two additional firefighters become part of the town's budget. So we're looking at a good deal for two years, if I read it right, and then beyond that, we're support... We have hired two firefighters, continuing on, at this $140,000 a year. So if we approve this article, you're really approving a much longer thing, and it sounds like a great deal, you know, adding two more people at the fire station, but that's the short term. Is that accurate?
Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article Sixteen?
Mr. Moderator? Just to answer the man's question, the grant time period is from January 1 of next year, if I'm correct, for three years, with a reduction at each year. After the three years, the town can... will vote to either maintain the staffing level with the two additional firefighters, or they won't. So you're not... What you're doing tonight is you're applying money to offset the amount that you need to fund the grant for this year, and then subsequently, in the next two years' budgets, we would supplement it in that budget. It brings the... It would bring the Fire Department, full-time Fire Department force, to 12 men total.
Heath Metis, Jeffrey Lee. Do I also understand correctly that we currently have at least one fire station that's not currently manned all the time? There's only two of them? Okay. I guess you guys know more than I do about that.
That's one of the reasons why we believe that the Safer Grant is a good fit for us right now. You know, that's why it's called a Safer Grant. We're trying to make our town safer, and we think this is a great way for us to move forward in that direction. But again, in two years from now, three years from now, when we come forward, if we feel that, you know, we're overstaffed, or we feel that we can't afford it, we can address those concerns at that time.
So we have a motion made and seconded to adopt Article Sixteen as read. Is there any further discussion or questions on Article Sixteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Article Sixteen is adopted by majority. Article Seventeen? To see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article Eighteen of the annual town meeting of June 4th, 2018, continued to June 5th, 2018, authorizing to Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax-exempt lease purchase to acquire police cruisers by striking out the words Ford Motor Credit Company, LLC, therefrom, and inserting in place thereof the following words: All American Investment Group, LLC, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Chief of Police. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Motion to accept as read.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Seventeen as read. Are there any
I'm Charles Salmon on Baker Street. What I was wondering here, I think I understand the intent. What I'm recommending is just to change it to say, not to strike out Ford Motor Company, the Ford Motor Company or the other company, as appropriate since, you know, they may already have Ford vehicles that would have to terminate them. I don't quite understand. It looks like a source selection. So you're selecting which one you want to get the vehicles from?
The Police Chief's going to come up to clarify what this is, what this is about. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The voters approved the funding for this article at the annual town meeting, and at the time, we believed that Ford would finance the acquisition of vehicles. Since then, we've learned that Ford will not finance any vehicles other than Ford vehicles, so we look to All American. All American currently finances, I think, the entire fleet of leased vehicles for the town, and it also has a lower interest rate than what Ford would have offered. So at this point in time, I would just recommend that we move forward with adopting the language for All American, and I'd ask you to support that. Thank you.
Motion to accept as read.
A motion has been made again and seconded to adopt Article Seventeen as read. Are there any further questions or discussion on Article Seventeen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seventeen is adopted unanimously. Article Eighteen? To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $1,082.50 in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purpose of paying two prior fiscal year bills to be funded from the certified retained earnings of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners. It requires a nine-tenth vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Eighteen as read. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Eighteen is adopted unanimously. Article Nineteen? To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $36,500 in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purpose of increasing the expense budget previously voted under Article Thirteen of the annual town meeting on June 4th, 2018, and continued to June 5th, 2018, to be funded from the certified retained earnings of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Nineteen as read. Are there any questions or discussion on Article Nineteen? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Nineteen is adopted unanimously. Article Twenty? To see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, and/or transfer Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, and/or transfer from available funds the sum of one thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-four cents to pay vendor for printing and mailing an informational flyer from the Free Town Finance Committee to all Free Town homes. This was submitted by petition. It would require a nine-tenths vote. This bill has already been paid, so the finance committee recommends that this article be tabled.
Motion passed.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to pass over Article twenty, which does almost the same thing as tabling, and it kills it anyway. Are there any questions or discussion on Article twenty? Sir?
Sorry to be a prickly liar. I'm just curious if there's a way we could just email it to somebody.
Right, there is an email system set up also, I believe, but this article is specific to paying this one bill.
Oh, I understand, but I was just curious, in terms of what the finance committee sets out something like that, can you just, is there a way to just edit it in a more modern technology, technological way?
The problem with emailing is we would need an email list of everyone, which we wouldn't have. So this is the only way that we know of that will reach every home.
Have we ever asked the townspeople if they would?
Yes, we have, and I think maybe the selectmen can respond to that. I think there may be a hundred and forty or so responded to that.
So the, at our last town meeting, the townspeople voted to do also a one-call system. The one-call system is used to let people know and inform people of special town meetings, annual town meetings, any emergency situations that we might be, need to be made aware of. You can contact town hall and set up right through there. You'll either get a text message or an email or both, or a phone call.
Okay, are there any additional questions or discussion on Article twenty?
Hi Chandler Bullock wrote. Is this, it doesn't state whether it's for a prior fiscal year?
It would have been for a prior fiscal year, but again, it's already been paid.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be stated?
Nope.
Yes, okay.
In this instance, it does not. Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article twenty? So again, the motion was to pass over, which has the effect of killing it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Article twenty has been passed over unanimously. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Free Town Protective Bylaws, Article eleven, zoning bylaws, section eleven point two six C, adult retirement community restrictions, lot size area, by adding the sentence, "The minimum acreage for an ARC development shall be not less than five acres for properties that are serviced by municipal water and/or sewer," and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the planning board. It requires a two-thirds vote. The finance committee does not recommend this article. We will now hear a report from the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name is Kevin Maris, Chairman of the Free Town Planning Board, and having a duly noticed public hearing, the Free Town Planning Board makes a positive recommendation. We would hope that this gets approved here at town.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article twenty-one as read. If there are any questions or discussions on Article twenty-one?
Brian Miller of Lexon Road. Is there any lot in mind that the reason why we're changing it from the ten to five is necessary, or is this something that you can get up and tell me, I guess, if you want?
I'll wait till you finish.
I just didn't know if there was any other as well, like you can basically just tell me now.
I want to make sure everybody can. No, we have no project before us. We don't have a certain lot in mind. What we do have is a housing production plan that's in the process. It's been through the state. We're waiting on the selectmen, I believe, that are going to be taken up at one of their next meetings. We worked two years on that housing production plan with Serpent, our regional planning authority. We spent, I believe, close to thirty thousand dollars in grant money. That was not our money, folks. And part of the housing production plan is to find alternative ways to offset the cost of housing. There's a big A affordable and there's little A affordable. Everybody, I believe, has heard of forty Bs. Basically, if your town does not have a minimum of ten percent big A affordable housing, then somebody can come in and put a forty B in, okay? And they throw all our zoning requirements out the window. Not that that's a bad thing. People need a place to live, but we have to keep in mind what this town can accommodate and how, how quickly we can grow. So to try to offset some of those things, we look at alternative ways, and, and one of them in the housing production plan, it's, you know, we establish strategies, and one of them is to modify the planned mixed-use district bylaw, which is down on South Main Street, and also to modify the adult retirement community bylaw, which is, this is here tonight. The idea on the adult retirement community is, there's some affordability components to it. We've heard older years now, I've been doing this quite some time, and I've heard a number of seniors come up to me before and at public town meetings, we need someplace for our seniors. I know the selectmen years ago took the initiative to look at the Free Town Screw Site, if I'm not mistaken, and that's got some hurdles of its own. This is not, this is not a town project. We're not proposing a housing authority, nothing like that. Right now, the bylaw states ten acres, so if somebody wants to come in, they can do this type of activity right currently. And it's been on the books for a couple, the adult retirement community, been on the books for almost ten years now. So I know it's a rather lengthy answer, and I apologize, but I, I think everybody needs to at least be aware of the, the history of this. So we thought of, of a different way. What if the lots weren't as big? What if, what if land developers and what if property owners had smaller lots? And then in theory, they wouldn't have such big capital outlay, and they could do a smaller project to keep costs down, to make it more cost-effective for the fifty-five and over folks who, who would love to stay in town, but they really want to get out of their home, whether it be maintenance, it's just too big, the cost of heat. So this was a small, small piece of our housing production plan that we made a promise in that plan that we would move forward with some of these items. We're going to move forward with some more in the future. We're going to be working on them. We thought this was a, a, a way to start.
Matt Summers County Road. You say you have no project in mind. I talked to someone at the office, the main office, about a year ago, and they did have a project in mind. They had a project on County Road. It had municipal surge in water. Now you're not mentioning it at all. That acreage probably is less than ten acres. Now how come that is not mentioned? It's not mentioned, what are the requirements? What, who goes into that? I would call not only Free Town residents, any resident, any person involved in there. You'd say there is no more project, and that was already memorized, and I saw it.
I know nothing of any project that's been before us on twenty, on County Road for fifty-five and over. Nothing. I, I, I would love for you to show me here.
For the show.
And, yes.
They want.
I'm sorry.
Free Town Screw.
That's the Free Town Screw? Okay, that's a town project.
What is this?
This is not a town project. This is just a simple bylaw. A bylaw, again.
If you change the bylaws, doesn't that mean that the Free Town Screw, like in San Diego, could be, work could be done there?
I don't know. I haven't been involved with Free Town Screw. I, I don't, no.
Well, that's a town.
True, but it's not the planning board. You understand me? We have a housing authority that was working on that. I believe the town administrator, before David, so I don't want to throw him in front of the bus, Dave, I apologize.
Yeah, but they were going to call a hundred and twenty-eight acres, a hundred and twenty-eight units. You know where the Free Town Screw Company is? They want a hundred and twenty-eight, they told me, a hundred and twenty-eight, two, two re, and, and the land had to be taken, they had to talk to, with Pushnet, because it was, they cleaned it out, they cleaned out that screw factory, and they were planning to do something, a hundred and twenty-eight residents, fifty-five, and anybody can come in, they didn't say it had to be Free Town people, one interest, all lights, we agree the congestion that's right at the line, and you're saying that nobody knows about this? Well, how come I saw the push drill? I have it.
What I'm, what I'm saying there, and I apologize what you needed.
Matt Summers.
Ha, Mrs. Summers. Nothing's come before the planning board. That was a town initiative, a town, again, hearing folks here in town.
Well, how come they're not meeting?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to try and answer that one question.
I want to make a motion to amend the article to state specifically far over fifty-five communities, preferential treatment to residents in Free Town already, town, they're out town's messages have done that already, and to also add that review by the housing authority as well with the planning board, as the bylaw states right. So again, do, do you want to say what I'm saying again, or do you want?
Well, to add an A restriction is outside the scope of the article, so that amendment can't be discussed because.
There already is an A restriction. It's called the adult retirement community.
Right.
Five and over. But no, I know, I know that already. What I'm trying to do is make sure that it's added so that Free Town residents have preferential treatment, just like town of Sutton, I believe Sutton Mass, I've been there already. I want that added to the article. Can I add that to the article?
I believe that would be outside the scope as well.
There's really theoretically no outside of any scope at all, right? As long as it's, we're amending the bylaw itself, Article eleven C. So this article, what, what I'm amending is.
So the, the article speaks to amending the acreage. When you get beyond anything other to do with the acreage, then you're getting outside the scope of the article.
But the scope of the article.
Is the acreage. The scope of the article is only confined to reducing the acreage from ten to five acres.
But when you add an amendment to it, you can add anything to it.
You cannot add an amendment outside the scope of the article because the warrant has to give people proper.
But the scope of the article is allowing access, so technically the scope is wider than what.
The scope of the article is the acreage of the property.
But not, but not, but the spirit of the article is to allow for more, so therefore, by adding an amendment to it right now, you're restricting, you're further restricting, which is what we're trying to do, so that it's still allowed what's restricted.
The article speaks only to changing the acreage. You can't get into other subjects of residency, ages. The article is strictly about the acreage of the property. It's limited in scope to the, you can make any amendment you want contained to the acreage, but you can't get into matters that are not the acreage.
All right, can I make a motion to add an article?
You can't add an article to a warrant, but you can do a petition for the next coming town meeting.
I thought it was a majority vote, you can add an article.
You cannot, no. The warrant is as it's printed.
All right, that motion is tabled.
Okay, folks, the motion has been made and seconded to table. A table motion is not debatable. We cannot continue to discuss it now because he made a motion to table.
Was it seconded? Did we go?
There wasn't, there was a motion and a second, so the motion to table is not debatable. We have to vote on that motion.
Motion to reconsider.
Right. So, folks, just so you understand, the motion that was made and seconded is to table.
Yeah, but I couldn't have my chance to speak.
He made a motion that takes away your chance to speak on the issue.
My question is, why, why are you changing it from ten to five?
Ma'am, he, you can't ask that question now because he made that motion.
Motion to reconsider.
It's not going to reconsider.
We have to vote on the motion's table, we have to vote on the motion's table, ma'am, before we can do anything else. He made the motion, it was seconded. So if you want to continue discussing the article, vote no right now, and don't table it. If you want the article to go away, vote yes in its table. So the motion before us is to table the article, to end discussion, kill the article, and, and send it away. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to that motion, nay.
Nay.
All right, the motion's table has failed. Now we can continue to discuss the article. Ma'am, go ahead.
I have, I have a question. You never answered my que, maybe you did, but I don't get it. Why did you change it from ten to five? That makes it easier for somebody to come and develop, and I can show you the plan where it said sixty-four units, two places, a hundred and twenty-eight units in, in the Free Town Screw Factory. Why, and it said all residents, of residents from anywhere. Now this is often, how come you're not, with the town administrator, he is the one sat me down and talked to me about it, and you don't know anything about it? Why are you changing it? That's my question.
If, Kevin, if I could, Mrs. Summers, I think the question you're asking sounds as though it's specifically to the Free Town Screw Site. Is that correct?
Any set, five, five. The question is, you're saying change the acreage. You're not saying how many units are going to go in an acre, in that acreage. You're not saying who's going to go, fifty-five. That makes a big difference. You can, another word, an old question was that when you planned this, the town gives, has a developer. Once the developer takes that man, he runs it. The town has nothing to do with it.
But I believe, and Kevin will speak to it better, I don't believe that this article is proposed is for a specific project. I think it's just.
Yeah, but once you have pacified a typical anywhere in the town.
Gary Mendes, one seventy-eight, Chase Road. My question is, if there isn't water and sewer, what happens? Who pays that bill? Well, it says if there's water and sewer, is it present, is it? I mean, and/or each? Which one are we talking? And if there's nothing there, what happens? Who pays the bill?
It's what's about?
For water and sewer to be brought to the property.
There is no water, so it wouldn't be allowed because you have to have ten acres. You don't have water and sewer. If you had water and sewer, you would be able to have five acres.
So what if you changed it to five?
So you're changing it to five, so you're actually allowing whatever to go on in ten to go on on five?
If they have water, the way those question reads, if they have water and sewer.
Present, existing, or added in at the time of building?
Yeah. It would be existing.
So I think that this article should have said existing.
I'm going to, I'm going to try, there's a lot of questions. Keeping in mind that the, the planning board held a public hearing for this, we, we had.
You don't tell us anything about?
I, I'm, I'm sorry. So what, what I want to do right now, okay, and I have.
Ma'am, ma'am, you have to let him answer before you can ask the follow-up question.
You, the first question you asked.
I've never been before.
I, no, I, I know that, I know that, and that's why I don't know that, but I'm, I'm trying to work with you. You asked a simple question, why are we doing it? It seems like we're trying to make it easier for this type of development.
But you're not giving us any details.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to be able to at least answer my question.
Ma'am, you have to let him finish answering before you can ask the follow-up question.
The question you asked, we're trying to make it easier.
Well, you're not giving any information.
This is, ma'am, you said this is your first public meeting, right? This, this bylaw that allows it on ten acres has been on the books for almost ten years now.
What, what do most towns have?
I don't care what most towns have, dear. I care about Free Town. I don't care about what works in Free Town here, and I'm, I'm not trying to get, I'm not trying to get personal. Here's what I'm going to do, Mr. Moderator, if I could, okay? I'm going to use a chairman's prerogative at this point in time. I know I didn't, ma'am, I really, I really would like to.
Ma'am, you need to let him finish before you can.
I apologize, ma'am, I do. At thi, at this point in time, I can see that there's a, a number of, there's a lot of confusion, and I'll take part of the blame as the, as the chairman of the planning board. I will tell you that our agendas are online, our public hearings are online, on the town website. We have public meetings. We invite every year, I come up here twice a year, and I have a zoning article, and I turn around and I say, folks, it would be nice to see you at our, at our public hearings. It would be nice to hear your input. The folks that I have heard input, the folks that we have heard input over the years, they want fifty-five and over. Why can, why do I have to go to New Bedford? Why do I have to go to Fall River? Why do I have to go to Lakewood? I grew up in this town. I want to be near my children. I want to be near my grandchildren. I feel safe with the police and fire in this town. So what, so, so what we're trying to do is make it easier and maybe a bit more affordable to those who are fifty-five and over. The bylaw is very specific about the number of residents, the type of units, the age, who can live there, whether a caretaker can live there also, because basic, folks, we have a lot of us that are getting to that age where we're going to need somebody else to help us, and we thought it would be nice to have a location within town. So you're asking?
Kevin?
Yes.
All right. Well, hold on, folks. Kevin, you said you were using chairman's prerogative.
I apologize. I just made, I, I made the chairman's prerogative thing up, basically. Here's the deal. If there's a lot of confusion, if there's a lot of confusion, ma'am, I'm going to just, if there's a lot of confusion, I'm going to make a motion that we pass over this article, and I will make a promise that we will have informational meetings relative to this zoning article, any other zoning article. And ma'am, I'm going to get your phone number every, before I leave. So I can talk to you personally.
Wait a minute, I want to say something. You don't let anybody know.
Folks, is there a second to that? Okay. Folks, we have a motion made and seconded to pass over this article, which again, makes it go. Folks, we have a motion made and seconded to pass over this article, which again, makes it go away for this meeting. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-one is passed over by the majority. Article twenty-two. Folks? Folks, we're gonna move on to article twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Free Town protective bylaws, article eleven, zoning bylaws, by changing section eleven point one eight H one, table of use regulations, to allow truck stops by special permit in the Science and Technology Overlay District, and/or take any action relative thereto. And you'll see in the table that's printed, the N has been struck out and replaced with an SP. This was submitted by the planning board. It requires a two-thirds vote. The finance committee recommends this article. And again, we will hear from the planning board their recommendation on this article.
Again, after having a publicly advertised public hearing, discussing this in an open meeting, the planning board recommends adoption of this article.
We need a motion before we can discuss.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt article twenty-two as read. Ken, go ahead.
Hope for South Main Street and so on it. I went to three separate meetings, and you sort yourself told me we had no plans for any kind of truck stop.
That's correct.
On three separate meetings. Now suddenly it's coming out that you're trying to put one out. That's going to increase the traffic, that's going to increase the amount of trucks. The roadways are already starting to break apart. Somehow or other UPS storage facility was put in behind, I'm sorry, UPS trucks were put behind the storage facility, that people claim they know nothing about. But yet, being a resident living right near there, I saw gravel being trucked in and out on a daily basis, but no one knew anything about it. Now you want to add additional trucks? No, it's not safe for the residents there, it's not safe for the children that live in that area.
There's children that live on Innovation Way?
Hold on, folks, hold, hold on, hold, hold on, Ken, Ken, hold on one second.
The area is residential, there are houses in that area.
Hold, hold on, folks. I'm just gonna give a general reminder of the discourse when you're speaking, you're supposed to address the meeting as a whole, not individual-
And I, and I'm very heated, because I was, I was told three separate times that there are no plans for a truck stop.
Understandable, and-
Obviously there is.
That's, that's for the planning board to address, but I just want to make sure that we're directing the conversation general to the room.
I'm not sure if everybody quite understands how zoning works. We don't have a project come into town and then we figure out, oh, how do we change zoning to make it work? There are no projects, there are no applications, it is all public record. If I spoke to you three times, ma'am, and I told you that there wasn't any, there is not any. I don't lie, I don't lie to you, and I don't lie to anybody else. My world, this world that I live in here with the, being the public world, it is all out in the open. You want to come down tomorrow, you can sit in our office in the planning board, you can look through every single file. You can do the same thing in virtually any other office, might have to ask permission from Kevin. But the fact of the matter is, we have no projects before us. We have recognized, we have approximately fifteen hundred vehicle trips, truck trips a day from, between Stop and Shop and Amazon. This proposal is to allow that type of activity, which is already allowed, by the way, again, by a bylaw that was adopted two years ago at town meeting. What we neglected to do is in our table of use, change it. Which, it's a, so this is more of a clerical, right now they can do this activity there, instinct clearly. Commercial- Ah, I got it right here. I'm sorry, I got a few of these. Yes, I will take my time, all these poor people, they love it when you put zoning articles at the end. They have to listen to us. Right here, the uses that are allowed, okay? Packaging, industrial research and development, public and/or commercial parking lots, okay? So, where are what?
Where are the commercial parking lots?
Well, Ken, Ken-
We don't, we don't, the question was, Mr. Moderator, where are the commercial parking lots? I don't know exactly how to answer that, except that we have none that have been permitted. This is simply saying, folks, the Science and Overlay, the Science and Technology Overlay District, which is located on Innovation Way, Amazon, for all those folks that don't know where Innovation Way is. We have two remaining parcels that I say we, located in the town, we do not own them. We have gotten complaints over years, to your point. Tractor trailer traffic at South Main is awful. Just last year, we put four new bylaws on to, to combat that, okay? There is a proposal before us now for a gas station to change and put diesel pumps in. Absolut- absolutely, unequivocally, not a truck stop. I need to get through everybody here, so everybody understands, it is not a truck stop. It hasn't been approved, it's still in the public hearing phase. Again, that's been going on for months, and quite honestly, I've had the same two or three people that showed up to every one of those meetings. They're open to the public and they're advertised. So the fact of the matter is, this is a, this is just housekeeping, to change it from no to special permit. It doesn't mean that they have it by right, it means if one wanted to locate there, they would apply. We would have public hearings. The public would have an opportunity to come in and weigh in on these things and comment on them, okay? We invite all this vehicular traffic, we all love, we all love getting our Amazon prime, and two days later, it all comes on, on trucks. I don't want these trucks in our, in our village district, in our village business district, and they don't belong as much as they have to be on South Main Street with Stop and Shop, it's, I, we don't want them there. The state just spent sixty million dollars on a brand-new off-ramp there. That's the area, it's an industrial area, it's the backside of a dump. That's where we want this type of activity, if it was even gonna come to town, we don't have a proposal. If we, we, we would be in a lot of trouble, quite honestly, and council can speak to this, that if every time we had a new proposal come in, we would come in and we would change the zoning to accommodate that proposal. It would be, it would, it's a tight rope to walk, and I don't want to be on it. So quite honestly, this is a bylaw that's been on the books for a couple of years now to allow that type of activity. We don't want it on South Main Street, okay? We don't want those trucks, but they need to stop and rest. And the fact is, what we said is, if one wanted to come to town, if tomorrow our new building inspector got application, where do we want? Do we want in the village business district? Do we want in the middle of town? Do we want in gen- no. We want the Science and Technology District on the other side of a highway, on the other side of a railroad track, next to a one point three million square foot facility that utilizes this type of tractor-trailer traffic. If you go up on Innovation Way, they're parked all over the side of the roads, up and down South Main Street. So what we did was, we said, if somebody wanted to come to town, this is where they locate, that's how zoning works. Hey, if somebody wants to build houses, this is why we have residential. Somebody wants to do business, this is why we have a business section, and within, no, you have uses that are allowed. What we're saying is, we should have changed that in the table of use when we, excuse me, two years ago when we adopted this bylaw here at town meeting. It was an oversight, this is housekeeping. I will tell you this when I have the informational meeting. I think it's, I think it's time, folks, that, that we're having a lot of conversation about zoning, people have strong opinions about it, okay? I've got a couple of years left on, on planning board before my term runs out. I'm gonna, it, it's gonna, it's gonna have to happen, I'm, I'm gonna have to make a concerted effort, that we're gonna have to try and get more folks involved, so they understand how this stuff works. This isn't just somebody in the back of the room one day going, hey, here's an idea. This gets thought out, advertised, talked about, public hearings, thirty thousand in grant money, I mean, we used, there's a lot to it. Zoning's not for everybody. So the answer to your question, why, why, why are we doing it there? Because of any place in town, that's where it belongs. Basically, in the form of, on the other side across from an existing warehouse.
I think that what happens is, is the public policy, you know, is generated through suggestion sometimes, already the businesses who approach, you know, with ideas. So what happens is, people wonder sometimes, when something on the blue light would tend to five, you know, why not four, or why not six? If they're, you know, people start wondering. So with this truck stop, people start looking around the area, saying, okay, where's this truck stop gonna go? And then you start speculating and wondering where, and sometimes it's misinformation. But, again, the problem is, is you don't, you're saying that there's nobody that has presented this idea to the, you know, to the town to get the ball rolling, to change this, this, or it must have happened years ago, obviously, because that's why this is just a clerical thing now.
No, yeah, we'll get it.
Right. The problem is, is, I mean, is this gonna allow for like a loves, you know, truck stop to pop up, and that, you know, you know, I don't think anyone's ever seen those, where they can park and shower, they get all, everything, mobiles and horses for you guys. But what I did is, I talked to a guy that was parked there the other day, and he told me that they have an app that will show truck stops in the area, and that this area has none. So if we have one, I live on Glass Wall Road, and I already got enough trucks coming down there, I don't even go down there because they're gonna go and, you know, rest for the night, because they're coming from down the fall. You know, because that's what happens, if they're looking on their app and see that the radius shows that this one's closest, then it'll go that way. That, to me, is initial. Whether this is a boom of cash for the town, if they did build a loves, I don't think it would offset having people run over. So, I- Am I wrong, am I?
So I understand, you're not making the clerical change? Because it's on the books right now, we cannot change it, we can't take it off.
Yeah, well, this will be the process, if we build up this plan, or if we make a reference. No. So, no, what I'm saying is, if we don't change this-
Yeah, they can do it right now. So I said, I apologize, it's my special permit, right, right.
I apologize, did I, I thought I heard somebody make a motion to move the question, did I hear that?
Yes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to move the question, otherwise called call the question, that means we end discussion and move immediately to a vote. The motion on article twenty-two was to adopt it as read. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yes, this is all in favor of moving the question, I'm sorry. All in favor of ending the discussion and voting?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion to call the question has been adopted by the majority, now we will vote immediately on the question, which again is to adopt the article as read. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, that does, to me, sound like it was more than two-thirds in favor, so we will declare that article twenty-two passed by the two-thirds majority. Article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Free Town zoning map in accordance with a list of changes as on file with the town clerk's office at the town hall, three North Main Street, a summit mass, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the planning board, it requires a two-thirds vote. The finance committee recommends this article, we will hear again from the planning board.
After having a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, the planning board recommends adoption. Simply stated, I'll read this statement, hopefully it's succinct. This article was submitted under the suggestion of the Conservation Commission. It rezones a number of parcels that have been donated to the Conservation Commission, or that are owned by the Fall River and/or New Bedford Water Departments. They'll rezone it from general, industrial, industrial to or residential, and it'll be rezoned to open space and recreation. It also rezones approximately five hundred acres recently purchased by the state for the expansion of the Free Town State Forest from general to open space and recreation. In addition, it rezones certain areas under conservation restrictions to open space and recreation, and it creates, excuse me, corrects the zoning of several lots that are split between zones due to changes in lot lines. In other words, you have a lot, there's a zone that goes right through it, it's predominantly open space as it exists, so the remainder of that parcel is gonna be open space. Again, mostly Conservation Commission land, land all like Fall River Water, New Bedford Water Departments, and also five hundred acres that was purchased by the state.
Hold on, we gotta have a motion.
Make a motion accepted as read.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to adopt article twenty-three as read.
Okay, is this far current, forward or own land? Or is it as they acquire more, that man gets brought into this, or what they have to re- Because I've been there great long, the forward's in the process of buying that.
Right.
And I, and that's the water department that's buying that, and I want to make sure that nobody's open spacing it in my backyard.
So, I'll, I'll ask Kevin to make sure that I'm right, but my understanding is this, they have to own it now, and it has to be listed on the list, or it's be-
I saw it, it's not on the list now, so we're-
Just so folks understand, open space and recreation, and-
Recreation, I think you're using it as a real name, I don't want it.
Could be a, right, there could be passive recreation, but open space and recreation basically is what it is. It's open space, it's recreation, it's the town, it's a state forest, excuse me. We've been successful, I know the Conservation Commission over the last, particularly ten years, of putting hundreds of acres into open space and recreation that we've been able to get donated, so. This is trying to be a happy balance, you know, we look at things and we want to put partland aside, and areas aside that cannot be developed in the future, so that we can maintain what we have here in Free Town, we are belonged to.
Motion for the question.
Okay, motion was made to call the question.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to call the question, so again, we're voting now on just ending the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion to call the question passed, we now vote on the article itself. The motion was to adopt the article as read, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-three is adopted unanimously. For article twenty-four, again, the dollar amounts are printed on the small handout sheet. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash to the capital stabilization account in the amount of blank, that has been recommended to you at two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, and to the stabilization account in the amount of blank, which has been recommended to you at two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote, the finance committee recommends this article.
The motion accepted as read.
Seconded as read.
Two hundred fifty-five thousand for capital plus stabilization in two hundred twenty-five, two hundred twenty-five thousand for capital stabilization. Hold on, I did it back. Two hundred fifty-five thousand for capital stabilization and two hundred twenty-five thousand for regular stabilization.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded to adopt article twenty-four with those recommended amounts of two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in the capital stabilization fund and two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in the general stabilization fund. Is there any discussion on article twenty-four? Discussion or questions on article twenty-four? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-four is adopted unanimously, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made, seconded at about twenty-fifth, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.